Clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Curtis.
President.
Councilmember Danuski.
She's excused.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness.
Here.
Councilmember Sperry.
Here.
Councilmember Herbig.
Here.
Thank you.
If, oh, let's do this one. We're going to adjourn from our executive session. There's no action to be taken. If you'll all please stand and... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I was hesitating because I was asking somebody in the audience to do it, but I decided that would be nice. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, the agenda will stand approved as written. The next item on the agenda is a presentation of recognition of Nancy Ausley, Assistant City Manager, for receipt of the 2016 Washington City Management Association Leadership Excellence Award. Mr. Jean, the interim city manager for Bothell is here on behalf of WCMA.
Mr. Mayor, members of council. See some familiar faces, other folks I haven't met. Anyway, I'm delighted to be here, also delighted to see civility at the government level, given that the national level perhaps it's lacking. But we're here to celebrate a success by your assistant city manager, Nancy Ausley. Nancy and I have known each other some years. I'm a past president of the Washington City County Management Association, and we really try to take every opportunity we can to recognize excellence wherever we find it. And Nancy is one who was nominated and selected for this award in local government. Nancy's, the highlights that really kind of were outstanding as far as the work that Nancy did was her work with trying to push your lead on your economic development strategy. Nancy created and implemented some new programs and developed relationships, which is really what economic development is about. How do you retain your current businesses? How do you help them expand? And then lastly, the part that gets all the attention is how do you attract new businesses? But that's all about relationships and trust, and that's what Nancy has done on your behalf. The Kenmore Business Incubator and the work that she was doing with the Kenmore... I can't remember what's the right name there.
Kenmore Business Alliance?
The Kenmore Business Alliance, thank you, Rob. Been working with them as I've worked with the Greater Bothell Chamber, but the Kenmore Business Alliance is a very active partner in that greater role, and that was something that Nancy had done. Basically, some of the things Nancy's been very successful in metaphorically laying out the red carpet for new companies, but also helping your existing businesses understand how important business is to the quality of life here in Kenmore and the things that you all have been working on for so hard. I like the FindKenmore.org website. I went and looked that up, and I thought that was fun. And also advocating issues on new investment, working with the development company that specialized in the historic preservation of the St. Edward State Park, the seminary building, and some $50 million, I believe, was involved in that effort. So if it pleased the council, if the mayor could maybe... I don't know if we've got a camera or if we're doing anything along those lines, but if the mayor wanted to ask Nancy to come up and be recognized, I think that would be the appropriate action by council. And I'm pleased to be here to represent that. Thank you.
So, you know, I can remember back from 2006. We were down in Olympia for the Association of Washington Cities, the, what they used to call the plaque, the legislative access case. And we met Nancy for the first time over dinner. She was hired by Steve Anderson, our then-city manager. And I'm trying to think who was with me. It was Lori. Lori was with Randy. And Randy, that's right. And she's been such a tremendous asset to this city. And we're very, very proud of her. And I want to make sure you get that a little bit. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jean. We really appreciate your coming here from so far away. Absolutely, please.
You've got to give me a minute now.
Well, I'd like to thank the Washington City Managers Association for this recognition and also to the person who nominated me, whose initials are R.K. Being at Kenmore has really been just a wonderful experience for me. I had, you may know that I worked for the largest county in the state and then the largest city in the state. But when I went to work for state government, what I loved the most about that job was going all around the state and visiting cities and counties and seeing what they were up to. And it always seemed to me that it was the cities of about this size, that, you know, 20 to, you know, 35,000 or 40,000 in population that were doing the most creative things. And so I was ready to be in that kind of environment and really thank the council and leadership and my colleagues at the city for making it such a nimble and exciting place to work, where you really can be creative and run with an idea. So, thank you again. I enjoy working with all of you and with my coworkers and with colleagues from other cities. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could just say a couple of quick things.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so as we know, council goal number two is economic development, and that's where you've put a lot of your resources. And I'm just thrilled to see the programs that Nancy's started. She's really put us on the map. Also, Bob Jean, I believe that's kind of a household name here at the city of Kenmore. And I'm just thrilled that he was able to come tonight and see me here in action being a city manager, because he brought me up in this field. He hired me as an intern during the summer of '94, when I was in grad school. And I helped him start a new city called Newcastle that summer. And a year later, when I graduated, I didn't have a job. And so I called Bob and I said, "Hey, I don't have a job. Do you got anything for me?" And he goes, "Well, I'm going to go start a new city called University Place. Do you want to come with me?" And I said, "Sure." And I grew up there, so that was an added bonus. But he took a risk on me and let me work for him for about 12 years there in University Place. So, very grateful. Thanks so much for coming tonight, Bob.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views on issues that are important to you and the community. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. And if the clerk will please call the first person.
Dave Maron. Good evening. My name's Dave Maron. I'm a resident of Kenmore since 1982. I want to thank you for the chance to address you. I live at 6316 Northeast 196 here in Kenmore. It's really nice to see Nancy be recognized for her achievements. She's pretty quiet when we look in from the outside, but we know there's a lot getting done there. I'm here tonight to talk to you about the North Shore Emergency Management Coalition, NEMCO. As you know, I'm Fire Commissioner for the North Shore Fire Department, but because we have not taken an official vote on this, I'll be speaking as a citizen to you tonight. NEMCO is a cooperative effort between Lake Forest Park, Kenmore North Shore Utility District, and the North Shore Fire District to provide emergency management services and coordination for our area. And this last year has been really a terrific year of accomplishments, from creating plans, from getting volunteers coordinated, doing practical exercises. A lot's been accomplished. And when I go to one of the NEMCO meetings and I see 50, 60 volunteers at each meeting, you know that the citizens really are involved and appreciate that service. The North Shore Fire Department has made a proposal to the city of Kenmore and Lake Forest Park and NUD to help move the NEMCO to a full-time employee position. We've agreed in principle to, at least the fire chief's proposal in principle says that we will put in $25,000 as part of our commitment to this. And knowing that North Shore Fire Department really has no responsibility for emergency management, that belongs to the cities. But we do derive some benefit from that. Our intent is to use that, the portion of the employee that we purchased with that money, to expand our community outreach. It's not going to be doing fire inspections or those kinds of things according to the fire chief. It'll be directly compatible to emergency management. So as this comes before you in the budget days here, we really would appreciate your participation. And you have my pledge that I will help work with you as we develop a governance and an agreement for this partnership to continue. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maron.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mr. Maron, thank you very much for your comments, and I'm sure we will be discussing this during the budget process. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Some moved. Moved, and I'll second. If there are any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved unanimously. Next item on the agenda is the business agenda. And this is City of Kenmore 2017 State Legislative Agenda, Mrs. Ausley and City Manager in Mrs. Murray from Gordon Thomas Honeywell.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Every year about this time, we bring a proposed state legislative agenda to you for your consideration. And we have heard from our legislative delegation how helpful it is, that there is a concise list of what are the city's priorities. And we shine in comparison to other jurisdictions that they work with. As you know, Gordon Thomas Honeywell assists us in Olympia with working during the session and, most importantly too, in the interim between sessions. And I think that's been a really key ingredient in some of the success that we've had, to be able to meet more informally with legislators when they're not in the midst of the intensity of a session. So tonight, we have for you some proposed priorities as well as policy statements. And Brianna Murray is here with us to give us first a recap of this last session, and then we'll discuss the proposed priorities. So, Brianna?
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Brianna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Governmental Affairs, and I'm looking forward to continuing to work with you into the 2017 session. I'm going to give some, a very broad, high-level overview of what to expect this upcoming legislative session. I'm not going to go too much into the weeds in the interest of time. So, the 2017 legislative session is scheduled to begin the second week of January. It is the first year of the two-year legislative biennium, which means it is a long session, which is scheduled to last 105 days. The primary task of the legislature will be to develop their biennial operating capital and transportation budgets. You'll remember that they do have three budgets, and they separate out transportation. That is unlike your city budget. The other area in which they are different is their fiscal year goes from June 30th of 2017 to July 1st of 2019. During their 2017 session, they'll adopt that two-year biennial budget. And then in the 2018 session, will be a short session where they'll come back in and make amendments to it. The, in the operating budget, we're expecting a number of different challenges. We have recently received the revenue forecast for that budget, and the budget is anticipated to be $41.2 billion. That is, that will, that amount will not cover the maintenance level cost of continuing to maintain services under current policy decision levels. That also does not include funding for the McCleary Supreme Court decision. I think, as many of you are aware, the legislature in recent years has grappled with how to respond to the Supreme Court's McCleary orders that they fully fund K through 12 education by 2018. Just recently, on October 6th, the Supreme Court met again. They voted, or they issued an order where they are going to continue to issue $100,000 a day sanction against the state, and that the compliance deadline for the state to fully have, fully developed a funding model is September of 2018. The September of 2018 deadline means that technically the legislature does have the 2017 session and the 2018 session to address McCleary. However, given the biennial nature of their budgets, it's likely that many of their policy and budgetary decisions around McCleary would have to happen during the 2017 session. In the capital budget, the size of the capital budget is directly linked to how large the operating budget is, since the debt service for the capital budget is a percentage of the operating budget. We're anticipating this year that the capital budget will be around $2 billion. You'll remember the capital budget funds bricks and mortar projects throughout the state, including school construction for K through 12 education, as well as all of the higher ed institutions. And then the third budget is the transportation budget. You are all very familiar with the 16-year Connecting Washington Transportation Package, which is informing the revenue going into that budget. They will continue to work on implementing that 16-year package. And gas tax revenues, from what we're forecasting, are slightly up. So, that's the large task of the upcoming legislature, the 2017 legislature, will be to develop these three budgets. Additionally, we're anticipating there will be thousands of bills introduced, hundreds of which are going to impact how the city does business, from everything ranging from public records to land use to transportation to law enforcement. There are always hundreds of different bills that are introduced that we work with Association of Washington Cities to weigh in on on your behalf. I want to take a moment to talk a little bit about politics. This upcoming, in just actually, I think, 22 days, we have an election, if my day counting is correct. We have an election occurring. If you didn't know that, you should get out more and read the paper. But the added piece of analysis that you may not know is that, right now, we have very narrow majorities in both chambers. In the Senate, you have a majority Republicans. In the House, you have a majority Democrats. Due to a number of retirements and key seats that are up for reelection, all of the House and half the Senate are up for reelection, there's a possibility that either of those chambers could change. Now, I am not going to sit here in this public meeting and pontificate over whether and how chambers may change in power. But what I will share with you is that if they do change, they're going to continue to have very narrow majorities, meaning that the vote difference will still only be a handful of votes. That means that the political environment that we've seen in recent years is likely to continue, which is that it's harder to get consensus on budgets. It's harder to get consensus on very challenging policy bills. What I've observed in recent years is that means the likelihood of a special session following the regular session is very likely. As a result, on your behalf and advocating for you, I am not scheduling a vacation for 2017, but am planning instead to be working. And, you know, the legislature does have to adopt budgets by June 30th, but a lot of the decisions around the McCleary decision extend far beyond just a basic budget decision, but are very complex policy decisions that may require extra time. So I like to, just to sum up my overview, this coming session is going to be very challenging, but it's also going to be ripe with opportunity. With a capital budget, with a lot of changes being proposed around education funding, and with yet a whole nother round of budget cycles and bills being introduced, I see where we can advance a number of Kenmore's priorities despite the challenges the legislature is facing. So I think that concludes my overview of what to expect this session. I'm happy to take any questions, as long as they're not too political. And then we can transition into the legislative agenda and policy statements.
Are you offering odds as to when the session will end?
When it will end?
Are you offering odds?
Am I? Odds?
Offering odds.
My guess, having not knowing the outcome of the November election, which I think could influence this significantly, and not really knowing what's going to be addressed McCleary-wise, because the education funding task force is still meeting, my guess is that it'll be the last week in June. It would be great if they finished by my birthday.
I'm hearing September, so.
The last heftel. Last heftel.
A little housekeeping. Local control asphalt regulations. Last sentence on the first page, or the second. Yeah, the last sentence on the first page there. The asks that. I think "city" is missing.
There you go. Thank you.
Okay. And actually, I think we're going to dive in and go over each of these legislative agenda items in the document in full.
Okay.
So, just by brief introduction, what you have in front of you is the legislative agenda and the policy statements. You'll remember that we began using two documents a couple of years ago, because we really want to keep our legislators focused on our top priorities. But as I mentioned, there are hundreds of bills that are introduced that we want to weigh in on in collaboration with AWC, but also some that really rise to a level where you want me to pay a little bit of extra attention. So the second document of policy statements provides that added direction to myself and city staff to weigh in and pay particular attention to these items, even though we want to keep our legislators focused on the agenda.
And I will say too that we'd like your general, you know, feedback on the priorities tonight. There may be some wording changes to the priority language, so that if we could get your approval kind of substantially in the form of these items, that would be helpful. And then, of course, we'd keep you current on any small refinements that were made later. But we also, with the corrected agenda that's in front of you, wanted you to see, again, what was the 2016 session priorities and policy statements, and that's attached as well. And thanks to the efforts of the council and to Brianna and her colleagues, we've been very successful in transportation funding over the last several years. And that really was the focus of legislative priorities for the last several years, too. So now we're transitioning a little bit, but it's, the first item still has to do with transportation. And even though 522 looks and functions a lot better than it did when I came to work for the city in 2007, thanks to the council's efforts and state and federal funding, the fact remains that 522 is a barrier for connecting people from this side of the highway to the lakefront and to other amenities, like the Burt Gilman and other features in our downtown area. So, the first item really seeks to provide a better connection, which we think will also have a good relationship to any development that occurs around the Lake Point property. And that is to ask for funding for a grade-separated crossing that would be decidedly multimodal, so that pedestrians and bicyclists could also be using this. And best guess at this point is $18 million, at least, to get started with that. And again, Brianna and Rob may have other comments on that.
So the only thing that I want to say is that, you know, the legislature did adopt the 16-year Connecting Washington Transportation Package. And within that package, for the most part, the revenue that was raised by that was allocated to specific projects. And there are going to be a number of other communities throughout the state that are coming to the legislature and asking to add their project onto the list. Essentially, what we're doing with this is asking that with the revenue that they're raising, that they add this project onto the list. Now, I think Kenmore has a very unique story to tell in making that request, because of the impact that you all have experienced, because of the other investments that have been made in the region. So you look at 520 tolling and congestion that is piling up on other routes, and it's pushing more and more drivers onto 522, which is thereby impacting your mobility within Kenmore itself. So, I just want to, I guess, preface this with, this is going to be challenging. We were very successful in securing Kenmore projects within the Connecting Washington Package. And we were also, and a lot of that money has been earmarked for specific projects. But as I mentioned earlier, gas tax revenues into the revenue package have come in forecasted higher than was anticipated originally. And some projects are coming in under budget. So when you look at the dollars and cents, there is some wiggle room there. There's some dollars available. The question is, from a policy standpoint, can we convince the legislature to spend them and to spend them here?
So the next item is with respect to Lake Point. And again, continuing on the theme that Kenmore has really played a very significant support role in regional transportation projects. And so we're asking for the legislature to extend incentives, economic incentives, for the Lake Point project to move forward, based on its legacy as a support site, going back to the days of Interstate 5 construction in the 1960s. And of course, one facet of this and a very expensive and challenging factor in any kind of redevelopment is the soil conditions and the need for hundreds, if not thousands, of pilings to be constructed to support structures. So, this is, this is one item that we'll probably be making some minor refinements to. But it, and I think it's fair to say that we'll probably be discussing this in Olympia for some time. But it's, we're going to get the, we would like to get the discussion started this year with the real prospect that we have now of a redevelopment project. So, that is the second item. And I think Rob has had some experience in kind of similar structural proposals like this.
Yeah, and so has Brianna. Yeah, and Gig Harbor had a similar situation for a difficult site, and they were able to get some tax help to help make it pencil and get it across the finish line. But I think the main point with the Lake Point project is this project has extraordinary costs associated with it. And to Nancy's point about Lake Point being a support site for regional transportation and a landfill in particular, and all the challenges that that provides, makes the case for state support in helping us bridge that financial divide and making the project... for state support in helping us bridge that financial divide and making the project viable. Without state help, without what we're asking for here, it's likely that the Lake Point site will continue to languish indefinitely. So that's the point we're making. And I believe we're also talking about getting an actual bill introduced regarding this proposal. So it wouldn't be where we're just talking about Lake Point, where we'd actually introduce a bill, and we'd figure out which committee it needs to start in, and take the temperature of legislators, and understand their concerns and questions, and try to learn as much as possible about how best to pass this bill in this session.
Yeah, I think the idea of introducing a bill is not necessarily to pass it this session, but to figure out what the fiscal analysis will look like from the state. I think that's going to be a key element on how we advance this bill forward. It has a huge price tag. You have to remember, there's this looming McCleary decision. The legislature is going to be hesitant to move something with a large price tag when they've got to invest in education according, to meet the mandate of the Supreme Court. With that being said, we want to tell the story that their investment in this site will show a significant return as the property develops and property valuations associated with the site go up, and retail sales tax increases with the development that occurs on the site. So the idea this year is to introduce the bill to see where the obstacles and challenges will so are, so that then in 2018 or 2019, we can be successful in passing it.
Yeah, I'd just like to reiterate what Brianna just said about the return on investment to the state. What we're saying, and we think we can make the case, that even with some sort of tax relief or incentives by the state, we can show that the state will have a return on investment on this site in time. So we're running numbers to that effect.
So you want comments on this now as we go?
Sure.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Brett?
Yeah, I just have a question. So on that bill, is that, that is Kenmore-specific then? It's not a bill that would incorporate any other type of general statewide policy? It's specific to that site? Is that correct?
That would be the hope. It's not going to be drafted to where the word "Kenmore" is stated in the bill. It'll be drafted a little bit more nuanced than that. And I guess the other thing I would note is that in advancing this strategy and figuring out the right incentive to use, and exactly how much and all of that, we're partnering with the developer. And the developer has indicated a willingness to be active in advancing a bill as well. And, you know, we've still got to work out all the details of that, but they've said they want to be included.
And to help answer that question, so the language would talk about former landfill sites on the shoreline greater than so many acres, and...
So just, because I feel like we had this discussion at some point, and I can't remember when, but is this something that has been this, you know, tactic, I guess is the best way to phrase it? Has this been used before for other sites? Because I believe, I remember, we had a discussion about this.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's a history of the state being willing to at least consider it.
Correct. And the, I think, when you say it's been done before, so there's been many different types of incentives and mechanisms built into law that were directed towards specific projects. One that, and just as a few examples, so there's a development that is down by Pacific Lutheran University. They wanted to have a property tax abatement, but current law didn't allow them to. They ran a bill specifically that authorized them to have the authority to do that property tax abatement. The bill that your city manager and I have worked on in the past in Gig Harbor was a bit more complex. It was a tax increment financing for sales tax bill. So they established a base year of sales tax revenues, and then any excess sales tax revenue that was generated beyond that base year then functioned as a credit against the state sales tax for the city to do revenue and make public improvements in the area. So that's just to show you the diversity of different incentives in different zones that are in current law that we could look at doing. We would want to partner with the developer to figure out what the right incentive is to get to the right dollar amount to make the Lake Point site work.
Great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm just trying to figure out the differences between what was handed out here and what has been published in our packet. What were the changes? Why did we do this?
Mainly, it's, Deputy Mayor, it is, it has to do with the 2016 legislative agenda and policy statements. That was mislabeled on the published agenda as of the 2017, but it's actually the 2016.
Other text changes that...
No.
Yeah, I was very confused.
I know. Believe me, I came back to the office this morning after having been away for a few days. I'm going, like, really? So, but thanks to the city clerk for getting this version posted and to your desk in time.
So I guess...
When there are changes like that, it's nice to know what was changed, because there are no indications of any wording changes, but that doesn't mean there weren't any. It just may not have been indicated.
Right.
And are we supposed to compare word for word to see what's, whether it's the same or what?
Just the heading, yeah.
It would be nice to have a notice saying the titles were off on these two documents.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, for the last few years, in conversations with different legislators and people, I've been talking about the importance of Lake Point and the revenues, and how much it'll be generating for the state and for the county and that, and they ought to take notice. So I'm glad to see that we're finally stepping up and doing this. But this is going to be kind of a heavy lift. I mean, we're going to be at this for a couple of years, so I'm glad that we're starting it, and it makes a lot of sense. So thank you for getting that put on there.
Uh, there's...
Yep, sorry. Councilmember Curtis?
Just a couple of minor points down under the, are we going to discuss any of them here, or only the top two?
Oh, no, we're going to do the whole thing.
We're going to do the whole thing.
You're going to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll save my comments.
Okay. The next item would be a capital budget request for the Rota Dender and Boathouse. You might recall, in the 2016 agenda, the proposal was for $500,000 from the capital budget. We were not successful in that, but we're asking for $250,000 for this project, given more support from other potential partners that are, that have come forward.
Yeah, and this is very preliminary, but I've met the new superintendent for Northshore School District, and in her past life at South Kitsap School District, she was instrumental in starting a rowing program there, and she was very happy about how it turned out and how it is still operating. And just very preliminarily, we've been talking about the school district possibly helping chip in for a Shell House. I'm going to actually meet with her later this week and talk about this in more detail, but if that is true, then that's the idea behind us reducing our request from $500,000 to $250,000. And so this would be the third year in a row that we've asked for this money for this project. And another thing I want to clarify for the record is none of the Prop 1 bond measure money is assumed to be used to pay for any boathouse like this. Any boathouse that would be funded on any park would need to come from something other than Prop 1 bond measure funding. So that's why we're going to the state legislature and looking at partnering with the school district, et cetera.
Do we talk about the next?
Sure. So the next item is local control on asphalt plant regulations. This is an item we've been working with Representative Jerry Palet with, a member of your delegation. We're in the process of working on some language with him that would allow you to have city authority to regulate asphalt plants. And the specifics of that are yet to be determined, but the idea is that it would not make it a statewide decision, but would be a local authority. There was a bill that was introduced last session that the mayor came to Olympia and testified on that was making a statewide policy. So this is a variation from the bill that was introduced last session.
So, you know, given the problems that we've had with Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, given the problems that we've had with this, is, I would like to see this moved up one. I would like to see, since this is legislative, the other is a capital budget request, I'd like to see it moved in front of the capital budget request. But that's just me.
Are these items listed in priority order?
I think it was a rough, rough listing of order, yes.
I don't know that we'd come out and say, these are in priority order, but they kind of are, because in our minds, we're thinking that the most important ones are at the top. But, so it's very loosely priority order. Is that a fair statement, Nancy?
And the, what you see on these one and 1/16 of a page will be on one page when the final version is ready.
Councilmember Curtis?
This is the one I have some concerns over. On the one hand, I understand we have, we care about the asphalt plant. On the other hand, I don't know that I really, as a city, want to take more responsibility for it, because I think it will cost a lot of money, be a lot of hassle. I think we'll be expected to be monitoring all sorts of things. So I have mixed feelings on kind of the concept of us, you know, having more local control. Assuming we go that direction, I still, there's just a minor point, but where it says, "and a neighboring concrete plant," I'm not sure that's relevant. So I'd probably leave that out. And then as far as the idea of ordering things, personally, I think that the St. Edward Seminary Building rehabilitation is more important than both the boathouse and the asphalt plant.
Your Honor, can I?
Yeah.
Add something to maybe help with the discussion? And that is, these regulations, they don't specifically say what the regulations would be, but a couple of examples would be, number one, for the ability for cities to require asphalt trucks to be covered when they leave the site. That could be an example of a regulation that this would give you the authority to impose. Another one would be the ability for you to require that the asphalt plant be enclosed inside a building, including the part where the asphalt goes from the hopper to the truck. And we could require that the building be enclosed, and that they have carbon scrubbers so that when air leaving, the building is cleaned and filtered as well. Those are a couple of examples of regulations that I would see us possibly imposing if we were given this local control authority.
Councilmember Herbig?
Now, two things. One, I'm not sure if the order is something that anybody else has ever considered when they're looking at this document, at least in Olympia. I never heard anybody talking about it that way, so I wouldn't be too concerned about the order. Second, Brianna, it's been a while since I've thought about the asphalt bill that Representative Palet did last year, but could you speak a little bit about what that bill was last year and how that's different from what we're looking at here?
Sure. So if I remember correctly, and city manager, correct me if you remember differently, but it was a bill that established statewide regulation that if you had an asphalt plant that was a legal non-conforming use, that they should become in compliance with current regulations. So it impacted far more than just your local asphalt plant. And the Washington Asphalt and Pavement Association, as well as the Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, testified against the bill because it was adopting this statewide policy and had very broad implications.
But they had also said at that time, the Clean Air Agency said, that if we worked with them and no improvements were done, or whatever, that they would be supportive of legislation this session.
Correct. So Representative Palet convened a meeting over the interim that the city manager and myself participated in, and Nancy, I believe you were there as well. And Puget Sound Clean Air Agency was there, as well as some citizens that Representative Palet had invited. And it is from that meeting that this concept of local authority emerged.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Well, I like having it in there. That would be the first thing. But the second thing I want to ask is, are there any other cities that would co-sponsor something like this, or could help be behind this type of an issue? Or are we on an island unto ourselves?
To be fair, I haven't done extensive outreach to other cities, but we did reach out to a nearby...
Redmond.
Redmond, thank you. And they were not interested in doing this endeavor with us.
Okay, and so when Representative Palet had his bill last year, were there any other cities at all that were, or representatives that saw that this was a good idea? Okay, I was just curious.
No. It was the mayor, Kenmore residents, Puget Sound on one side, and Puget Sound Clean Air Agency, and the Asphalt and Pavement Association on the other side that testified.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And I am supportive of it, just because it doesn't tell us we have to do anything. It just gives us the option to do something. And I think that's, local control would be good for something that is one of our significant obstacles.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. That's always great to hear this, and I always learn so much. So I do have just a, maybe how you can shrink this a tiny bit. So under this local control on asphalt plant regulations, that middle sentence really doesn't add anything. Everybody knows we're urbanizing. And just tell them we have an asphalt plant here, and we want local control to make it... Maybe you can help you get to one page.
I was going to say, it sounds like it will help us get to one page.
Yeah.
Mine on that comment, I do think it's worth noting that it is a legal non-conforming use, because I think that's relevant to the issue.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Ken?
Okay. The final item on the agenda is supporting the efforts that are underway at the State Parks Commission and with rehabilitating the seminary building at St. Edward. We're not planning a bill or anything like that, but it's possible that some legislation could be introduced. And we just want to have this on the agenda to continue the support for saving that building.
Yeah, I think the concept here is that our legislative delegation has invested so much time and effort into finding the right calculus that makes this project work moving forward, that we just want to have it on our legislative agenda, if nothing else has been an item that we've all worked collectively on, and that if there's any need for us to continue to collectively work on together, we will do so.
Councilmember Herbig?
Thank you. I am a little concerned, actually, having Kevin Daniels' name on this document, because I believe, you know, the official position, generally speaking, is that we're in favor of rehabilitating the building. I think with his pending land use matters that will be coming before us, I think it might be improper for us to be putting his name in a public document saying that we support that. I think that might get us crosswise with some quasi-judicial stuff down the line. So I would prefer if we take out reference to Mr. Daniels.
Yeah, that's fine. We actually, you know, had a conversation about that in drafting this. So that's fine. Any comments on the suggested policy statements? Nothing is really different?
Yeah, they're identical to the last year's in terms of content. And then I guess in the concept of reordering and prioritization, affordable housing is slightly higher on the list. slightly higher on the list.
No, I think, I think the priorities that, yeah, I think these are fine.
So again, we will make some refinements, and we thank you for your, your comments and suggestions on this. So the final version will, will reflect your comments and some, probably some minor updates to the Lake Point item.
Great.
Any other questions before we're done? All right. Thank you.
Great to see you all.
Great to see you. Thank you.
I'll just say that the personal investment that the mayor and, and the rest of the council have made in meeting with legislators, being available in, in Olympia and in the interim, as we said, for, for meetings, has, has really made a difference. It's not something you can just say, "Okay, we'll do it this one year and we'll be golden." It takes a long time to form those relationships and, and to be recognized in Olympia. So the investment that the city has made in, with your time and energy, and also with, with supporting really effective government affairs assistance in, in Olympia, has been really smart, I think, and, and has, has paid off for us. So, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is review of proposed 2017-2022 Capital Improvement Program. So this is basically a discussion item tonight, and we will be, be coming back to vote on it, I believe, next meeting. So, yeah, let's make sure our questions are asked, and not that we won't get to ask questions again, but let's try to get the welcome done tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Baker. Council members, if you'd give me a moment to pull the presentation up, we'll get started. Okay. Great. I'm warm. Pardon? No, the green light's on. It should be coming on momentarily. Yeah, it doesn't. Oh, well, there's no, it's not hooked up.
Well, I thought it was working by telepathy there.
My apologies. I didn't realize that was not connected. Oh, dear. Hmm. Okay. Please, take it away.
What do you do when a group of clowns comes up to attack you?
I actually know this one. You go for the juggler.
That's right.
There we go.
Thanks. Thank you all.
Did that do the trick?
The joke made it all better.
Okay, we're in, we're in business. All right. Good evening. Tonight, I'm going to provide a presentation of the 2017-2022 Proposed Capital Improvement Program. This is actually a significant part of the process of establishing the 2017-2018 budget because the first two years of this six-year capital improvement program set the capital budget elements for the 2017 and 18 biennial budget. And if it's okay with you, what, how I'd like to do this is go through the presentation first and then take you back to each component of the capital improvement program. And with the help of our subject matter, matter experts who are with us this evening, we can allow you time to discuss and explore, ask questions about particular projects and programs. Would that be okay?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, that just went a little fast. Okay, there are three components of the capital improvement program: parks, transportation, and surface water. In this six-year program, at this time, we have nine park projects valued at $11,238,000, ten transportation programs valued at $61 million, and there are seven surface water projects at 4.7. This is the list of the nine park projects. And you can see that there are three, which is P-18, P-27, and P-28, which are the Rota Denderin Park Waterfront, the Squares Landing Waterfront, and the Loggum Park Waterfront. These three projects are dependent and funded by Proposition 1 Walkways and Waterways, should that be approved by the voters in November. So those three projects are contingent upon that type of funding. The next slide shows you the traditional six-year phasing of the projects and the funding resources to support those projects over that period of time. Then we have the ten transportation capital projects listed here. And again, T-41, which is the Juanita Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Program, and T-42, the 68th Avenue Pedestrian Bicycle Safety Project, are, again, dependent upon funding from the Walkways and Waterways Proposition 1 Bond Measure. This is the six-year phasing of the projects. I know that this is a little hard to read, but it, it is in the packet. One of the elements I'd like to point out to you that's really significant is the magnitude of the sidewalk program. You can see I subtotaled for you here the sidewalk program costs over time of $5.1 million over that six-year period of time. So a significant investment in parks and a significant number of grant matches and funding options that would support those. The last component, or third component of the capital improvement program is the surface water projects. There are seven projects here. The first two are connected. It's the 190th Street Culver at 61st, which is funded by, in this, in this CIP, by an application for a Public Works Trust Fund loan. So the loan repayment, should that loan be approved and funded, are also being paid out of this, this program. We can talk more in detail about the likelihood of that, of that loan being approved, but I'll move on for the moment. And this is the six-year phasing of those programs and the funding that, that supports So as I, as I mentioned earlier, the first two years of the six-year program set the stage for the 2017 and 18 budget. These are the impacts that would be seen in our 2017-18 biennial budget, should they move forward, you know, as, as presented tonight. So we'd have $4.4 million in the parks capital funds, $12.2 million in the transportation capital fund, and $3.4 million in the surface water fund. And on the right-hand side, the, is the list of all the various grants and funding sources that, that support these projects. After tonight, we'll have a public hearing next week on this capital improvement program. And incorporating any changes that occur tonight or in the interim, it would be my hope that we could adopt the ordinance to approve the 2017 to 2022 capital improvement program next week. So that concludes my overview of the program. And if it's okay with you, then I'd like to start by, certainly back now to the parks element of this six-year program, and introduce Ann Stanton, who is here to help us, help answer questions about different park projects, and Rob, what may provide some assistance as we go through this as well. So I'll go back to that slide and open it up for questions. Okay. Park projects. We have nine. Are there any questions about these particular, any of these particular projects, or any comments anyone would like to make?
Any questions or comments?
On, on Twin Springs, that $40,000 is actually for a public process and some preliminary design. It's, it's not really for any physical improvements. And so soon after the first of the year, the plan is to hire a landscape architect to help guide us through a community discussion on what the interim use would be.
I also have all of the individual park project description sheets here on the computer. If you'd like me to pull up any one of those that talks in more detail about the, the project or shows the funding in more, more specific detail.
I'm, I'm hearing some good news about Tolt. As you know, you approved our agreement with the City of Seattle, and I've signed it and sent it on to the City of Seattle. And we're hearing that the Seattle City Council will consider and hopefully vote to approve the agreement in early December. If any of you happen to be interacting with any city council members from the City of Seattle, if you could just nicely bring it up and say, "Hey, I've heard that you're going to be considering our Tolt Trail on the, on your December agenda. That's great." You know, some positive comments like that would be great. We really want it approved soon because our plan is to go out for bid on Tolt when the bidding climate is best, and that's right after the first of the year.
Morelands is finally on our current CIP list. I, I'm sure some of you are happy to see that that has finally come, come to fruition. Are there any questions about the Morelands park project?
Yeah, I have a question that, I don't know, maybe, Ann, it's less about the financing. It has more to do with the term of the closure of the field. And it was, one of the documents I read had it at about 18 months, and it seemed like a really long time for a field renovation combined with some of the improvements that were being put on there.
I, I think this is on, yes. The construction period is estimated to be five months, but then, once the grass is in, we expect to, you know, to finish the work in November. But after the grass is starting to grow, we need another year for it to fill in before we can put league play on it. So that's where the time delay is.
And so is that, okay, so that makes sense on the league play. Will that also be used as the playground during that time then as well? Or how does that work?
It is, and we can talk to the school district about not putting a lot of organized play out there, I think, during recess when kids are out there running around it. That's not the kind of use that would delay the grass from filling in. But yeah, we're looking at opening the, the field back up for scheduled play in 2018.
Thank you.
Also, one more thing to add on Morelands is that it is still under design. And as we have all seen from experience, the cost of a project changes as design progresses. So stay tuned on that.
So, I mean, back on, on the she uses a playground, have we reached any agreement with North Shore Schools that they are going to participate in maintenance?
We have not reached an agreement. Did you want to respond to that?
Sure. We've begun discussions with them and told them that, you know, the lease is going to be expiring soon, and the idea is for us to take over maintenance, and in return, they would pay us rent. There may also be a scenario where there's some consideration for parking that they allow us to use when school's not in session. So those negotiations are to be determined, but we do, we do have time. We're not in a, in a rush to get those negotiations done, but we do need to get moving on them.
Well, I guess I, I have a concern here in that the park is ours, the parking lot is ours, but we can't use it.
Oh, right.
Yeah, I mean, that we can't use our own park because of the school system, but they don't want to necessarily take responsibility for the maintenance on that park, certainly the portion they use.
No, I think they do in my conversations with them, that they understand that they need to pay their share, their fair share of maintenance.
But what, you know, and I guess the concern I have when we go to the expense of, of planting a lawn and trying to ensure that lawn fills in, to have, you know, heaven forbid, kids should play on grass. But I mean, you know, I, it's just something I would hate to see torn up, right? We're, we're not allowing kids to play baseball on there, but we're allowing, you know, kids to, from the school to run and play. So I just have some concerns.
So part of the lease agreement would talk about rest periods because, because the, the quality of the grass and the ball field itself is going to be at a much higher standard than it is now. And so we'll need to talk about giving that, that outfield and infield rest periods during the year, things like that.
You have some?
Yeah, I don't actually have it. I didn't pull it up right here in front of me, but I remember when I read the, the project bill or the project sheet on that, and that the, I think it was the very last paragraph, it mentioned that if it can't be worked out, it will be a significant maintenance cost to the city. And, and that concerned me because I, I, I know the interlocal that was in effect, or still is, does say that they'll maintain it. So I would sure hope that there isn't a significant additional cost since we're making the capital improvements. And then, gosh, I had another comment on there, and I, I can't remember what it is. So that's, that's it for now. Thanks.
We've been, we've been updating the 2006 adopted master plan, and we'd like to bring that back to council in one of the next meetings here in the near future to go into these details and scheduling and parking and...
Deputy Mayor.
I know what my other, I know what my other question was. I was going to say, when you said you were meeting with the superintendent this week, I thought, what a great item this would be to bring up, to at least plant the seed. No pun intended.
In fact, I have twice already talked to her about Morelands, and so, yes, I will talk with her more this...
would pay us rent. There may also be a scenario where there's some consideration for parking that they allow us to use when school's not in session. So those negotiations are to be determined, but we do have time. We're not in a rush to get those negotiations done, but we do need to get moving on them.
Well, I guess I have a concern here in that the park is ours, the parking lot is ours, but we can't use it.
Oh, right.
I mean, that we can't use our own park because of the school system, but they don't want to necessarily take responsibility for the maintenance on that park, certainly the portion they use.
No, I think they do in my conversations with them, that they understand that they need to pay their fair share of maintenance.
But, you know, and I guess the concern I have when we go to the expense of planting a lawn and trying to ensure that lawn fills in, to have, you know, heaven forbid, kids should play on grass. But I mean, you know, it's just something I would hate to see torn up, right? We're not allowing kids to play baseball on there, but we're allowing, you know, kids to, from the school to run and play. So I just have some concerns.
So part of the lease agreement would talk about rest periods because the quality of the grass and the ball field itself is going to be at a much higher standard than it is now. And so we'll need to talk about giving that outfield and infield rest periods during the year, things like that.
Brent, you have something?
Yeah, I don't actually have it. I didn't pull it up right here in front of me, but I remember when I read the project bill or the project sheet on that, and I think it was the very last paragraph, it mentioned that if it can't be worked out, it will be a significant maintenance cost to the city. And that concerned me because I know the interlocal that was in effect, or still is, does say that they'll maintain it. So I would sure hope that there isn't a significant additional cost since we're making the capital improvements. And then, gosh, I had another comment on there, and I can't remember what it is. So that's it for now. Thanks.
We've been updating the 2006 adopted master plan, and we'd like to bring that back to council in one of the next meetings here in the near future to go into these details and scheduling and parking and...
Deputy Mayor.
I know what my other question was. I was going to say, when you said you were meeting with the superintendent this week, I thought, what a great item this would be to bring up, to at least plant the seed. No pun intended.
In fact, I have twice already talked to her about Morelands, and so, yes, I will talk with her more this week. My, I don't think she'll be the person I'll be negotiating with directly, but it'll be good to talk about it with her again.
Deputy Mayor.
Brent's pun was not really a pun. I just had a question. Is it seed or is it sod that we're going to put down? And sod, I would think, would mature a heck of a lot faster.
You know, this is something we had, I hadn't gotten that far in, but if we're going to be putting this down in September, it probably should be sod. But right now, we're talking seed, so...
Okay. But the sod would mature a heck of a lot faster and I think would stand up to the kids playing on it, which is better.
It would, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Councilmember Sperry.
So we're on the sod, sod train or whatever here. Don't quite have the puns that you do, Brent. Bastier, when we had the ball field improvements up at Bastier, I remember the Sheldon, how they were telling that they actually did some really special sod up there that was specially designed for wear and tear. And at the time, I believe, it was kind of a new thing they were trying, so that could be an interesting thing to check into to see.
Definitely.
Yeah, how that worked out.
Are we done with parks?
Are we done with parks?
We are done with parks. Everybody's nodding. We are done with parks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. I'd like to invite the transportation team to the table.
Whoa, you're clearing the room out here.
Have another chair.
I believe you know these folks, but I will introduce them again in case you don't. John Vicente to my left, Kent Vaughn to my right, Brett Schott to his right, and of course, Chris Overly, the Public Works Director. So before you is the list of the 10 transportation capital improvement projects. Be happy to go through these and answer any questions that you have about anyone in particular.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
West A. I thought we were finished with West A.
We still have expenditures in 2017, 2018 for landscaping, the warranty for landscaping, and also an establishment period. And there's also some utility agreements that we're going to be reconciling, that we expect those expenditures to happen in 2017, so that's why there's a carryover.
Thank you.
And I thought West B, even though we have funding for it, I didn't think that we were going to be doing the West B.
Well, officially, we are, but I think that's something we need to talk about over the next year or two.
Councilmember Herbig.
Could you talk a little bit about the 61st Avenue survey and conceptual plan? What that entails, what that is?
So that hasn't been assigned to anybody yet. I'll take that on. So on 61st Avenue, you know, we have our sidewalk challenges. And so the idea here is to take some resources and actually survey north of 190th, so survey the sidewalks, survey the trees, survey the intersection at 193rd, with the idea of coming up with some alternatives. So not only for sidewalk repair or replacement, which is probably more likely, but also intersection control at the 61st-193rd intersection. So remember, we have been talking about a roundabout, but the costs were pretty high. So we'll do all this survey work next year. We'll lay out some options, and we'll come back and talk to you about those.
Thanks.
Councilmember Sperry.
So T-43, the SR-522 pedestrian crossing study, what does that entail and what are we looking for?
Brett, do you want to talk about that one a little bit?
This is, I guess, similar to the 61st Avenue. It's taking a look at a number of alternatives to get a crossing of SR-522 between 68th and 61st avenues, both above 522 at grade and below 522, and then advancing that to about the 30% design level. So this is something that we are, we applied for a grant for some of this funding. But it would be a study to about the 30% design level, so we have that on hand.
Excellent.
My understanding is it would not be pedestrian only, but we'd be looking at multimodal crossing?
Yeah.
Mopios enclosed, right?
Yes.
Oh, wow. Excellent.
Anything else?
And the status of that grant, can you remind me, please, for the pedestrian crossing?
We reviewed that with WashDOT. They made some recommendations that we actually add going to the 30% design level. So we added a little bit of scope to that one, but we got some fairly favorable response on how it scored against the other grant applications in that program.
When can we expect to hear from them on whether we get the grant?
WashDOT will make recommendations by late this year, early next year, but it has to go through approval by the state legislature before the final awards are made. So it could be middle part of next year before we know for sure.
Deputy Mayor.
The sidewalks in Juanita and 68th are least contingent on passage of the Prop. 1.
Yes, they are. In fact, the Juanita pedestrian project, the $12 million project, if you recall, only five of that is contingent upon the Proposition 1. The rest, hopefully, would be other funding partners contributing to that project.
Traffic calming improvements. We're not doing any more of the neighborhood meetings, right, in the neighborhood?
Correct. This is just...
This is just like little roundabouts and things like that.
Yeah, projects which haven't been completed yet. A couple of things, we're waiting until the more favorable bidding period after the first of the year. Put those out there.
On that topic, we want to take you all on a tour, when the time is right, of all these neighborhood traffic calming improvements. Obviously, we wouldn't do it if with the majority of you in the same car, so we'd probably have to do it in three tours. But we're excited to show you all the cool things that Brett and the neighborhoods have come up with throughout the city, and it's a long list. So I think it may be after the first of the year?
Yeah, that would probably be a good time.
Councilmember Smith, no? Deputy Mayor, you got yours? All right, anything else on traffic? We're done. Missed no release.
John hasn't said anything yet, so...
And he really wanted to.
Yes. So, John, because I know we were going to delay our public meeting for the bridge architecture conversation, could you kind of let council know what you were thinking about that timing?
So we decided based off of a whole bunch of elements with the walkways and waterways bond measure coming out and the holidays, to just push our open house to the end of January, just that we get some really good attendance. So once that happens, then we'll put together our 30% plan and then come back to you guys and show you what we're talking about, what we plan on building.
All right. We're done.
Okay. Thank you very much. The last element that I'd like to bring to your attention is the surface water improvement program. And here with us tonight is Richard Sawyer, Surface Water Program Manager. Chris Overly is still here. These are the projects associated with the six-year CIP. Some of these may be new to you, so this is time to ask questions, comments. Could we talk about the public works trust fund loan and what the status of that could be, could be or not?
I think Councilmember Smith had a question.
Yeah, Councilmember Smith had a question, then Councilmember Curtis.
Good.
Guy may have just missed my group that walked out the door for this question, but what was the status on the bridge that goes across Swamp Creek, right south of 522? I remember that there was something about the deterioration of that bridge, and yet I don't see it anywhere.
Yep, well, John's gone, but I think I can still answer that.
Yeah, and I, sorry about that.
No, that's quite all right. So we had our Jacobs engineering team, or our bridge engineering group, do a review of that structure. And it's old, and it'll have to be replaced, but we did not program that in this six-year capital improvement program, so we think it still has some life left. And so we will start looking at design probably right after that six-year point. So we knew in the next two years that we weren't needing to start design, but I do think maybe in the next biennial budget, you'll start seeing us programming some money for design.
Which bridge is that?
This is the Lower Swamp Creek Bridge.
Oh, okay, Swamp Creek, okay. Yeah, I got it. Yep, I know where it, okay. So, surface water, questions? Councilmember Curtis.
I had a question on the two retrofit projects. Are we, have they deteriorated, and we're really totally fixing them up, or we're just spiffing them up to new standards?
Good question. So we have a couple hundred public facilities, and these are all facilities that usually have been built by developers when they've gone in and done their, the plats. And these, we go out and we inspect these annually, and we have a kind of a short list of some of our older facilities. So Strawberry Hills is a neighborhood that was done in the late '70s, and so it's just a tank that's kind of, we've been keeping an eye on, but it's deteriorating, and it could be nearing the end of its life. So the retrofit would actually be to kind of dig that up and reconstruct the facility, and we would be bringing those up to current standards, so it would actually be performing at our current level of surface water control instead of the 1970s. And so Strawberry Hills is one that we have had on the books already, and so that will be a design and build in this budget. And the next one is to start design and working on that as well. And that's the same situation in other old, late '70s, early '80s facility that's kind of nearing the end of its life.
I'd like to add that Richard's not intending to just necessarily rip things up and replace them as they are. He and I have been talking about looking big picture at other issues in the area to make sure that when we do these fixes and replacements, that we might be able to, you know, get as much benefit out of them as we can.
So kind of a related question. It seems like if there are dozens to hundreds of these, do we have responsibility for all of them? Somehow it seems like this is a good deal for the developer and a bad deal for us as the city?
Well, it's just similar to the roads that are built. So a lot of the roads that we have, they weren't built by the city. They were built by developers when they built the plats, and it's the same with the public drainage systems associated with those streets. So they build them up to the standard of the time, and we inspect, review, and sign off on it. But once we take it, yes, we're the stewards of those facilities moving into the future, so... And for the most part, it's worked out well. Like I mentioned, I mean, these facilities are, you know, some of our older ones, and many of the, many of the facilities are still functioning just fine, too, so...
Anything else?
So like they mentioned a minute ago, this assumes going into debt for surface water management. It assumes getting a low interest, and when I say low interest, I mean really low, like a quarter percent interest, basically free money, public works trust fund loan from the state. Well, the state legislature, in order to balance the budget, has rated that public works account, and it's not likely that we will actually be able to get a loan. We're going to try for one, and we're going to apply for one, and maybe this, something miraculous will happen, and they'll put dollars in that account, but it's doubtful. So there's a good chance we may not get this loan because the money may not even exist. And so one thing, well, we don't need to get into detail tonight, and it's more for when we talk about the swim budget in a couple weeks. We believe that you do actually have the cash available in your swim fund to pay for this project, if that's a direction you wanted to go. The fund balance, projected ending fund balance, is about $2.2 million in the swim fund. That's a very, very healthy fund balance. It's close to 100% of operating expenditures. So you could quite easily do, pay for it with cash, and still have a very healthy fund balance, even after you did pay for it with cash. This particular project is important because it affects the public safety of the road. It's been causing voids under the road and the sidewalk. And we wanted to just do some simple concrete work around the culvert, but we were told by the agencies that this, that if we're going to even touch the culvert, then it needs to become a fish-friendly culvert, and that's what's driving the costs. But this is about safety and preserving the life and functionality of 61st Avenue.
And so we have applied for the public works trust fund loan, so our application is in. And my recommendation would be if we don't get it, that we do have some of our own money programmed into this project, that we actually start design and get to maybe 30%, and then come back and talk about what our cost estimates are looking like.
And how to pay for it.
Correct.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. So just to clarify, are we talking about Surface Water Number Eight? Is that the project you're referring to?
That's correct.
Okay. And so I know that you've spent a lot of time and effort looking at like the sidewalk and how things were kind of washing out under the sidewalk. Is this related, part of it? I mean...
Correct. This, the project listed here would be to replace the culvert that's there with a fish-passable box culvert, as well as the actual upstream head wall would need to be engineered and beefed up, because that's where a lot of the, during high flows particularly, it's hitting that area, and there's just an old rock wall that's there now. And so we would be doing a significant head wall construction on that side of it as well. And then this also includes some evaluation and repairs for about 150 feet of that rockery south of the culvert where it is now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Richard, thank you for what you did at the concerts this past summer. I don't know if you're all aware, he had a really great demonstration that showed water from what happens when you're washing your car and filtration and all this other good stuff. And it was a big hit with the kids. And also the turd toss. They would learn to pick up plastic things that look like animal droppings, and they'd toss them into the garbage can for treats. So thank you. The kids really liked it and had a really good time. It certainly raises the awareness of what some of these things are doing to our environment. So thank you. Thank you very much. All right, I think we're done, right? Okay.
Thank you. So again, I'll bring this back next week for a public hearing and final action, barring any changes between now and then. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Gregory. Next item is staff report, Northshore Emergency Management Coalition. An update. Brian Hampson.
Your Honor, while Brian's coming up, I can just provide an intro. When ESCA dissolved, the cities of Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, along with Northshore Utility District and Northshore Fire District, joined to form a new agency called NEMCO. It's a little less than a year old. And the arrangement was that Northshore Utility District would take one of their full-time positions, currently occupied by Carl Lunak, reduce it to half-time, and then Carl, as a consultant, would be a half-time consultant for NEMCO in providing the staff support needed for this newly formed agency. That's been working great. I wish it continued. I think it's been great, but it's not working for Northshore Utility District. They tend to realize that they need...
District. They tend to realize that they need Carl back full-time, or that position back full-time at NUD. And so with, with Carl leaving, we were faced with several options. One was trying to get a consultant, a half-time consultant to replace Carl. And so we did a public, we did a, a formal request for proposals. We tried to beat the bushes and get the word out. We had it advertised in, at the state and national levels. We asked King County to help us get the word out for this request for proposals for a half-time consultant. And we got one proposal from an engineering firm, and their, their price was quite high, and for the, compared to the services that we'd been paying for through Carl. So because of the high cost, and because of the limited services in the proposal, we decided to take the half-time consultant option off the table. So then that left us with a couple other options. One is to replace Carl with an employee that would be hired by NEMCO, either full-time or half-time. Another option would be to go the Woodinville way, which City of Woodinville was also part of ESCA, and they decided to contract with King County for services. And so they are using King County Office of Emergency Management to provide their services. King County has talked to us about this quite a bit. Jody Miller, who is the deputy director there at Office of Emergency Management, they claim that they can provide similar services that ESCA provided at no cost to the cities. I'm not saying that that is a great option, because number one, they're down in Renton, they're pretty far away. And number two, they're a pretty busy agency, and although I have a great deal of respect for them, and they're, they're great, I don't know that they could give us the time and attention that Carl's been giving to us at a half-time level. Also, though, in addition, Office of Emergency Management has actually given us a proposal to provide somebody two days a week, to come up here and physically be here two days a week, so not quite half-time, and provide a lot of the services that Carl was providing, but for a higher cost of about eighty-six thousand dollars that we would
Sixty-eight. Yeah, sixty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, I've got my numbers inverted. I thought it was higher than that.
Did I lose your train of thought?
So anyway, so Brian, do you want to take it from here and talk about the latest, the proposal that the other NEMCO agencies are promoting?
Sure. I wanted to make one addition to your comment by going the Woodinville method, is King County doesn't have the availability to have the volunteer management portion that we may be interested in, and that's through, you know, the CERT emergency response teams that we have. So they wouldn't be able to manage those, those emergency volunteers as well as we may need them to.
And Carl has been doing that in his half-time role. And I think, out of fairness to him, he's been working a little more than a half-time position. But a lot of it's been because of the community work that he's been doing, and the work that he's been doing with volunteers. So he's been doing like half-time plus, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. So the, the latest proposal that we've been talking about was a full-time employee based on an eighty-six thousand dollar salary. It would include benefits and overhead. The initial calculation that was put together had the 2017 value at roughly a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which may be a little bit low based on our experience with the benefits and salary. And then the annual increases from that starting point are an increase in three percent annually, which again may be a low based on what we, we see happening with our current positions, which generally increase in a range of six percent per year. And so the current arrangement would have a, so if I could back up a little bit, we, we originally had Carl for half, half-time. In order to fill this gap, to have Carl more full-time, the fire department proposed having the discussion of paying for twenty-five percent of the position, in which in turn would fulfill some of their other needs that they had, that they lost through position cuts two, three or four years ago. And with that, I was talking to Chief Torpen, and his calculations are based on the overhead and the benefits portion of it, but mainly the, the, the fire department would be paying for the, the overhead of the position, which came out to be twenty-three, twenty-three and a half percent of the overall cost of the position. The North Shore Utility District would want to continue their current amount that they're paying, which is seventy-five hundred dollars, which would be a six percent share, which would leave the two remaining cities at basically a sixty-forty split of the remainder, which put us at forty-two percent, and the City of Lake Forest Park at twenty-eight percent. So currently, what we have with the half-time position is both of the districts are contributing eleven and a half percent, which equals seventy-five hundred dollars a month, or excuse me, a year. And the two cities are splitting the difference fifty-fifty, which is thirty-eight percent of the overall cost, and twenty-five thousand dollars each for each city. So that's the gross cost that we're currently paying. We do receive some grant money back from the state in the form of emergency management grant programs. And if we have an emergency management grant program in place, we can get our money back. And the grant money that the city receives is in the range of thirteen thousand dollars. And the, the City of Lake Forest Park, on their own, they're not big enough to be eligible to receive that money on their own. But if they partner with the city, they can receive theirs. And their portion is roughly eight thousand dollars. So the, the net money that we're spending this month, this year is about twelve thousand dollars. And the Lake Forest Park is spending about seventeen thousand dollars. And so what we're talking about next year would be, you know, the city starting at a fifty-four thousand dollar contribution minus the, the EMPG funding, which is the thirteen thousand dollars. So we could be at about forty thousand, forty-one thousand dollars. So it's a substantial increase from what we're currently getting, and it's also a substantial level of services that we'd be providing. I should, I said, I don't think it'd be that we'd be providing. I think the level of services that the, the position would be providing that could benefit the districts.
Questions, yeah, Deputy Mayor.
What were we paying ESCA?
In the range of forty-eight thousand, forty-nine thousand, just maybe below fifty thousand dollars a year.
And, and they got our EMPG money, correct?
We, we, we did get a refund, but I don't know if it was in the form of the EMPG money. But we did receive annual returns, but I'd have to
I believe our net was typically around forty that we paid ESCA.
That sounds about right.
Councilmember Sperry, then Councilmember Smith.
Well, there's no doubt that we've, we've benefited from having a local person leading the effort, and, you know, kind of mobilizing the, the, the local community. However, I am, I am concerned about more than doubling our, our costs, and then also sort of being part of a system that just keeps going up. And as much as, it can be a very difficult thing to, once you start that train going, to, to say, hey, wait a minute, this is just too much. And we're just at the beginning of our budget, so we're, you know, still trying to look and see what all the competing priorities are for. I guess one of the questions that I have is, I, I know that you went out, or I think to the city manager's point, he went, there was a, a request for proposals, but has anybody considered advertising basically a half-time position, doing this type of work? To me, that seems like it would open it up to a lot more people that might have an interest and expertise in this.
We had a discussion, but we, we didn't do that, we didn't open it up and advertise for that. But it's a really good idea. If we go with the direction of staying with the half-time employee, we have a couple options that we could do. One is to advertise it that way, as a half-time employee, or contract it, you know, to contract it through another organization.
Could I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So one part I'm not real clear about, Ian, I know Commissioner Marin is here. So this idea of North Shore Fire Department contributing a percentage to sort of replace some, some work that was, used to be done, is that new? Was that not in the scope of work before, when we, we had the fifty percent position?
Yeah, right. It wasn't in our current scope of work that we have with NEMCO in the 2016. But Chief Torpen has some needs that, gaps that he could fill, that he would use that additional twenty-five percent of that person to work on.
Maybe fifty. I guess I can't answer that question.
Councilmember Smith, and then Councilmember Curtis.
Ian, if we did this agreement and participated in this with the other agencies, would we have, what is our, what is the long-term, are we committed indefinitely, or we, do we have an ability to opt out with like two or three-year notice or something, or a reasonable length of time? And so that would be one of my questions, because there may be things or opportunities that come along that we would not, that either don't exist now, or that we hadn't anticipated. And then the other option, or the other thought is, you know, as the city does grow, maybe that there potentially would be a position that would be hired in the city that could absorb maybe a role like this, too, within it. I don't know if that's even possible, but I, I guess I would like to know if we are locked in indefinitely to an employee percentage that we have no control over.
The current proposal, it wouldn't have us locked in indefinitely to any situation. So currently, you know, we're in the biennial budget process, and we would only be budgeting for the next two years to pay for our portion of emergency management. And anything beyond the two years, we can't really guarantee when it comes to the financial part of it. But, you know, to have, you know, somebody who would have that full-time position, it would be good to have that security, and at least they would have, and, and they would know what their potential work period could be. If it's two years, three years, or five years, at least they would have a good understanding of what, you know, that, what our organization would at least be.
Right. I think, I think the short answer is they're wanting a minimum three-year commitment from us, isn't that right?
Three to five-year commitment from us.
Okay. I, I didn't realize that was the case. Okay, no, that, that's helpful. And then my only other comment I would add is, I, I do think it's a, how we get there, I don't know the right way, but I do think it's of value to involve the community, since there are a number of volunteers that want to participate, it sounds like, and have been attending some of the, the programs, that I think that's a, that's an important part.
Councilmember Curtis, then Deputy Mayor.
I have just lots of comments. I'll sort of buzz through the comments and hit a question periodically. My first comment is, it, it appears we've got a really good deal. The fact that we can't match it at anywhere close to the same price is probably we got more than our money's worth in this last year. But part of that is, is we've been really happy with the point five or point six FTE. Why would we want to increase it to one FTE if we've been happy with what we got for that amount of effort? So going up to the full-time, it seems like we're making a job for somebody, and that's not our job. Our job is just to get a certain service, to have a job description, and get that job done, not create a bigger job that we will then need to pay for. In general, we as a city have been very, very careful to add any permanent positions. We'll often go, you know, temporary positions or part-time positions. I mean, we're really careful to not add the long-term commitment of an employee that if things go bad, we have to let them go. We just try to avoid that. A couple little detailed questions. Why did it change from fifty-fifty to sixty-forty between us and Lake Forest Park?
I don't know where that number came from, but I think that we need to have more discussions with the group on that, that, that contribution, but
Population-based. They're saying, because we're bigger population, we should pay that higher percentage. Like, like Brian said, it's been fifty-fifty in the current arrangement. I would argue that it's fifty-fifty, because even though we're bigger population, we think, I would say that we're using about half of his, half of the person's services, and Lake Forest Park is using the other half.
Yeah, the service that the person or agency would be providing us is the same regardless of the population. So if you're, if it's putting together a plan, it's the same plan for each city, so it's not necessarily based on the population. So I think that we can have those discussions with the coalition.
Another minor question. Yeah, assuming the costs go up three or six percent per year, would all the entities, entities share that increase every year, or we would get stuck with it because it's the city's responsibility?
Well, North Shore Utility District has made it clear that they only want to contribute seventy-five hundred dollars a year.
So they'd become a proportionally smaller percentage over the years?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Since the North Shore Utility District and the Fire Department are voluntary contributions, they could go away if either of those entities had budget cuts. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I, I disagree with that, because we'd all be contractually locked into whatever arrangement we were in. So if it was a three-year agreement where we're all contributing a dollar amount, we'd be contractually all obligated. But the statutorily, under RCWs, the responsible, responsibility for emergency management rests with the cities. So it's out of the utility districts and the fire districts' good graces that they're even contributing to this at all. Can I make one more point? My understanding in talking to Chief Torpen is that if we don't do this full-time arrangement, then the fire district's twenty-three point five percent share is off the table. Yes?
Kind of, it gets to the next question. This, this seems like a very complex arrangement to have four entities all party together. Has anybody calculated how much we're going to pay the lawyers to make this thing work? I could imagine it will add to our legal bill.
To make the contract work, yeah, it'd be a few hours of work from our attorney, yeah. So, are you
No, one more last question. So let's say if we just hired a point five, because that's about what we need, and we just did it with Lake Forest Park and nobody else, would we save money compared to this proposal?
So I, I ran some quick numbers. If we had a half-time person at seventy thousand, and we split it fifty-fifty, that'd be thirty-five thousand minus the EMPG money, so we'd be about twenty-two thousand instead of the forty the EMPG money, so we'd be about $22,000 instead of, um, the $43,000. So it'd be about a $20,000 savings to us.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Well, two things. Your comment about creating a full-time position for somebody. Carl has done a bang-up job, uh, with the program so far, and he needs, you know, he can't, he can't work for us. He can't quit a full-time position with the utility district and work for us half-time. So, we need to find somebody else. Well, we've already done, in our, uh...
P.
...to, to find somebody, and, and we didn't, we weren't too successful, at least this first go-round. We have an individual in the community, a resident of the city, who is really eager to do this, an emergency management program, and he's done well with it. Uh, and for him to continue, it needs to be a full-time position for him, and this, the utility district is not willing to continue the half-time support for his livelihood. So, the only way he could continue with it was if we were to make it a full-time position. And the, the, the proposal here for all four entities to contribute, uh, does make sense, makes it loo- more affordable than for us to hire him full-time, or for Lake Forest Park and us to hire him full-time. The problem you have is anytime you get four different entities, or any number of entities involved in a, in a project, you really have to lay out all the, the guidelines, all the rules ahead of time, and, and Counselmember Curtis pointed out, the, the, the legal ramifications of this. And if it's not done properly, if we don't have a good, straightforward understanding of who's, not only who's funding what, but who's benefiting from this full-time employee, then sometimes you can get into situations where we're not getting our money's worth out of this guy, or, or, uh, you're getting too much out of this, and those kind of discussions. And so it all needs to be laid out and figured out in advance, so you eliminate these kinds of squabbles as much as you possibly can. There also needs to be, uh, identification of the motivation of all four entities to be involved in this. What we, what do we each want to be getting out of this? And the fire district wants something different than what the city of Kenmore and city of Lake Forest Park wants out of it. And obviously, the utility district has different goals in this thing. Uh, and then what can each organization bring to the table, um, not just in terms of funding, but, uh, assistance and input for the program? So, all those things need to be laid out ahead of time, and the smaller, the number of organizations that are involved, the, the better. But still, it can be done. And many times, and, and I mentioned last week, what we went to Madison, Wisconsin for was collaborative, uh, leadership in things, projects like this. And this is a good example of the difficulties that it poses, but the advantages that it also, uh, provides. Uh, no one of these four entities could afford to do this, or, I guess we could afford to do it, but it would tax the budget a lot more than if all four get together. If all four contribute to the, to the, the funding of it and the program, it's, it's, in other words, a sum is better than each, the whole is better than the sum of the parts.
Is there a question there?
That's a comment.
Okay. I have a comment, really quickly on what you, you, a part of what you said is, um, not that we would recommend it, or Carl would be up to it, but Carl does have a, um, a business, emergency preparedness business. And if he was to work for us part-time, he would still be available and could go to work for other jurisdictions or other cities and, you know, make, uh, make up the difference. But I don't know if he's interested in that, or, um, I don't even know if it would be Carl if we went, you know, with the half-time position, but I just wanted to point that out, that if we went with somebody half-time that had an emergency management background, they could still go spend their other time, uh, making up the full-time, um, position. And also to what you said about the, um, working together, is the King County OEM, Office of Emergency Management, is actually looking at our coalition, and they are soliciting this to other, uh, agencies and jurisdictions on how, how we should be working together. And so, what we're doing is really good, and I'm glad that we're having a lot of these discussions, because, um, if we can continue it somehow going forward, um, I think it would be beneficial to both communities.
Yeah. It takes an effort to make it work. Counselmember Herbert.
Brian, could you go over, I know you went over this briefly earlier, but could you go over the pluses, the pros and cons of just going with King County? I understand the cost is low, but I'd like to hear your perspective a little bit more on what the pluses and minuses are going that route.
Are you talking about the free option, or the...
Free option.
Free option, okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's two options. So there's a free option, and the county is responsible and obligated to provide the cities within its county with a certain level of services. And, you know, those, those could be, um, helping us put together our emergency management plans, our hazard, hazardous mitigation plans, and all of our other emergency plans that we're supposed to have, they'll help us put those together.
They're also... Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Um, well, when they do help us put together those plans, unfortunately, they don't have that local knowledge of each and every aspect of it, so it still takes a lot of the, the individual cities', um, time and commitment to really put these good plans together. And so even though, you know, they're saying that they're helping you with the plans, it's really the city that's doing a lot of the, the heavy leg, l- l- leg lifting or work.
So, so where would that work fall to in the city?
In reality, it would fall to us, uh, for the most part. Um, that said, with Carl, we're, we're still supposed to be providing a lot of that work ourselves. Carl can't do all the writing. King County can also provide, uh, training and do exercises, you know, tabletop and field exercise for us, and, um, they can help us with sheltering. Uh, the volunteering, I think, is the part that, where they would not be able to help us very much.
Yeah, and I, that kind of stuck out to me too, but I'm honestly struggling with the city spending, you know, upwards of $54,000, $55,000. The sun, you know, at the end of the day, the, the thing we're getting from that compared to other options is, you know, the ability to have some volunteers who are trained on the ground. I'm just not sure if that is worth that amount of commitment financially. Um, I'm not saying I've made a decision on where I want to go with this, but I'm just, that, that's my initial thinking, looking at this, is maybe, uh, the free option might be something for us to strongly consider, especially knowing that our budget is looking a little tighter than it has the last couple of years.
Counselmember Smith.
I just have to add, since I forgot to mention it earlier in my comments, uh, there's somebody that lives at my house with the last name Smith that works at NUD, and she happens to be married to me. So, um, I just want to let, you know, I don't see that as a conflict, but I just wanted to at least let everybody know that.
Counselmember Curtis.
So, um, has anybody thought about adding a fifth entity? Is there another city like Woodinville that we could add, so we will, actually, would actually need a 1FTE? So I think the issue for me is, we don't need 1FTE, and why would I want to pay for that? So, but if there was a, a, another city that they could chip in, now you do need 1FTE. Have we considered that?
We originally did consider other cities. We considered, uh, Woodinville, Bothell, Shoreline, and it kept coming back to, uh, Lake Forest Park. Us and Lake Forest Park really share a lot of the, uh, the same stuff, like the fire department, utilities, and it, uh, just made a lot more sense to stick with, um, Lake Forest Park.
Plus Shoreline has their own full-time person, Bothell has their own full-time emergency management coordinator. Um, Woodinville didn't seem to be too interested in joining our group, and they're a whole other city away and don't have fire and public works in common with us.
How about the idea of, take the free deal and see if Carl could just do some of the training? Because I assume a lot of that trains in the evening and weekend, as opposed to during the work week? So hire him like, hire him like a quarter time, or a .2FTE?
Yeah, right. There could be a possibility. But when you say full-time FTE, remember that the fire department's gonna pay 25% of it, so it's really a three-quarter time FTE that would be dedicated to NIMCO?
Yes, but if we only, if we don't need 1FTE, we don't need 1FTE. I don't care who pays for it. Somehow, it just doesn't seem like the right thing to do, to increase a job that you're getting by with .5 or .6. It, it's extra cost, gonna come back to us eventually, that we're gonna end up paying for it.
So, I'm confused by all of this. Fire department, I've heard 20%, I've heard 25%, and I've heard 23.5%. So that's how much they're gonna pay. Let's just go 23.5%. That's what the fire department's gonna pay. LFP's gonna pay 40%. We're gonna pay 60%. And NUD is gonna pay something. That's well over 100%. So, I'm confused.
Between Kenmore and Lake Forest Park, it's 60-40.
So the, the chief took the overhead portion of the FTE and had the fire department paying the overhead, which came out to 25 and a half percent, or, excuse me, 23 and a half percent. And so, that's what they'd be paying out of overall of the position. North Shore Utility District only wants to pay, contribute $7,500 to it, so there's a 6%. And of the remainder, it was split up 60-40.
Okay, so, then, in looking back over this weekend, and looking at some of the message that, that went out, I mean, if we're supposed to be in this together, why is this all coming from Lake Forest Park and not coming from this emergency agency? I mean, it ju- that just doesn't seem right.
We're getting there. Uh, we have met with, uh, King County, the city of Kenmore has, and we've got, uh, training on the, um, communication. The fire department and North Shore Utility are meeting tomorrow to get their training. The thing is that the Lake Forest Park previously used, uh, the King County's old communication, uh, program, and so when they converted to the new system, they just turned, uh, converted Lake Forest Parks over and into the new program. But going forward, after everybody gets a training, we're gonna set up one NIMCO if we're with, if we're going this direction, NIMCO, um, um, communication arrangement. So it's gonna come...
Right. But I mean, that, that's been going on for a number of months now. I think, it was well into last year that a lot of emergency announcements were coming out. The police chief was, was doing them, and we were getting them here, and so it's always been them and us. And so, um, but again, like, like Counselmember Curtis has indicated, if we don't need a full-time person, we don't need a full-time person.
So, if I can just do a quick, um, maybe recap. So, our, our financial situation continues to not be the greatest long-term, because we continue, because of the way state law is, we continue to have flat revenues, and our expenditures, our fixed ongoing costs, continue to go up faster than our revenues. And, um, so I was, so I'm constantly trying to beat back new ongoing costs. Now, one-time capital costs, we can make that call, as long as we know that it's one time. But when I see a new ongoing cost being introduced into the budget, I've got concerns about it, because there are competing demands and limited resources. Our, our, um, financial projections show our revenues and expenditures lines crossing soon, in the next two or three years. Um, and so this is, um, this increase is a close to $30,000 a year increase. This proposal is close to a $30,000 a year increase over what we're paying this year, net. A net $30, it's about $28,000 increase, might actually be more, uh, because I think the $127,000 a year is low. Um, and, um, so, is $30,000 gonna break the city's bank? No, it's not. Um, but it's all these little new ongoing costs that I'm trying to beat back. And do I think it's a great idea that they have in front of us? Yes, I do. But do we need to make that leap from half-time to full-time? Could it be a three-quarter time position? We've had a lot of success with part-time positions here at the city. We've had, uh, no shortage of qualified applicants wanting to apply for, for part-time positions. So, um, that's where I'm going with this, is why the leap from half-time to full-time? And could we make the, I, I, does it need to be more than half-time? Probably a little more than half-time. But why don't we make that incremental move than a full move to full-time? That's been my argument with the group, which they haven't bought, by the way.
Anybody else? Counselmember Perry.
I think that what, maybe stepping back and looking at, you know, what is it that we really need? You know, what are the tasks that need to be done? What are the, you know, the management of the volunteers? What is it that we're really looking to accomplish? It seems like we're, in my opinion, where this went a little sideways is, you know, there was a, a certain person in mind that had, had, you know, needed this amount of work. And is, you know, I, I think it's great to have a person that, that does a great job and all that, but it, I think we need to really circle back around, what is it that we really need to have done? And then what's the most cost-effective way to do that? So, um, yeah. And I, I think part-time employees are, are good.
Do we need any action on this? I don't, don't remember.
Um, just a general sense from you, um, are you happy with the full-time proposal? Do you want us to pers- try to pursue something more at a part-time level? Do you just want us to go with the King County?
I guess I personally would like to see some part-time option. And if we can come out with some free stuff, with pay a little bit extra, or if we get a three-fourth or .6 FTE and split it with Lake Forest Park, um, I'd, I'd rather look at options.
Okay, all right. Counselmember, what is that? Appears to be.
I'll tell you, what, I'll tell you what I think. I think I'm comfortable on this. There's so many different ways to do this, and I'm, I'm actually comfortable with going with our city manager's discretion on this. I think he and Brian obviously have their, their fingers on the pulse of this, and, you know, there's probably some little tweaking on different things, whether it's with the county or with this proposal, or different things that may make one or the other more appealing, and, and I'm comfortable, um, letting you decide the route that you think best covers our service and our needs, and at the same times protects us long-term. Uh, that's, that's where I am.
Ian, you've got a good handle on the, on the bigger picture. I share your concerns with ongoing costs, so... Is there agreement, consensus there? Mm-hmm? Brent's statement with the city manager.
So, to paraphrase, keep exploring options? Would that be what we're doing, or what?
Well, I mean, I...
It sounds like we're...
Yeah.
...continue to develop.
I don't, because I don't believe we have any formal proposal in front of us, that I'm, I'm comfortable allowing you and Brian or your staff to decide what, what you believe is the best, is gonna get, meet the needs for the city at the lowest cost. I mean, um, I do think it's important personally to involve the community if we can. I just, I see that as something, it's really no different than getting volunteers on any other things. When they have some ownership in their community, it gives them a different sense of value, and it helps to create what we all want. Having said that, there's obviously other issues that are important in this decision.
Yeah, yeah. I too am torn, because we're, again, we're talking about Carl, and I think if it became a position, full-time or part-time, we would need to competitively recruit for it. But Carl's been phenomenal with, uh, the community outreach and the volunteers, and I think that's a, a really valuable piece that the NIMCO partners are trying to capture, so...
Yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Yep. It's just that there's so many competing demands on our budget, it, it's tough. Yeah, so... All right, I have a couple more things for city manager report.
Yep.
So we're looking at having our annual goal-setting retreat on the weekend of January 6th and 7th. sixth and seventh. So that's a Friday, Saturday. It would be all day, both days. I think I've talked to most, if not all of you about it, and I think that's a go and it works for Michael Pendleton. And then also I sent out an email today, my performance evaluation, the evening of November twenty-second. I like that the fact, I like the fact that that date works because it's right before Thanksgiving, so maybe you'll be in the generous holiday spirit. But I'm looking at a six-thirty start time, if that's all right, on November twenty-second.
I mean, earlier might work better for me personally, but I can make whatever work that evening if six-thirty works better.
I would, I wouldn't mind earlier. Six o'clock?
Six. I agree with six.
Okay, six o'clock on November twenty-second. All right, that's all I have, your honor.
All right, councilman reports, comments, initiatives. Councilmember Smith.
The only thing I'd like to add is I, I appreciate hearing our city manager talk about how concerned he is about long-term costs. Not that you don't think about that and talk about that other times, but it's something that is, is always a beautiful thing to hear.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing to add.
Deputy Mayor.
Last Friday, a lot of discussion was had at the ETP meeting on the legislative agenda. And I took back your comments. And so they're back to the drawing board with it and hopefully by Monday, next Monday's meeting, we'll have the next draft of it and to see what you guys think of it at that time. There was a lot of discussion about the VMT was one thing, and they took out the paragraph that set a timeline for implementation that concentrates on, our recommendations are just concentrate on the study and, and look at it. And as Brent had mentioned before, you know, if, once you cross the line and say you want to implement it at such a time, that's a little more than a study, that's a little definite. And there were some other things. One thing that was suggested that we add to it is urging the state legislature to put the money back in the public trust fund, public works trust fund, that many cities need it as we do here for transportation projects. And so if it's, if it's, can they continue to raid that trust fund, there isn't going to be the money for us to borrow at that low interest rate. The other item I wanted to bring up, something that a citizen commented to me about, raved about the mural on Seventy-third. But when you really think about it, you can look at that thing ten times and see ten different new things. And a lot of them, you don't know the significance of them. Yes, we've had good, good publicity in our newsletter and in the reporter and all that, but it might be nice to have a brochure and maybe an online source for information about what, who's Cooper, for example?
A legend.
Yeah, well, all those different, yeah, a legend that describes it. And I don't know who best to do that, maybe Stacy and Gaul to put that together, but I think the city should assist them in doing it. We could just have a little brochure here that had the highlights in it and a reference to a website where you could go to find out all this stuff, where everything is listed categorized in there. I think it'd be worthwhile because it's a history, but it's also a present-day Kenmore legend and.
Before it's lost.
Yeah, before it's lost. So it all needs to be documented. I think that'd be worthwhile doing.
That's a good point. So we had a visitor here from Representative Del Benny's office, Ben Baraski. He works in the DC office and he came out here to work with Congressman, a woman here for the next few days, one of his frequent visits, and he toured St. Ed's. And we had the opportunity to talk to him about the ballfields today and also he had a tour of the building to get an understanding, a much better understanding of what was, was going on. So we certainly appreciate the opportunity to work with the Congresswoman. The Congresswoman also addressed ETP last, last Friday and she's very, very active, obviously, in the district and so it's, it's nice to have her input. I was asked to be part of Senator Cantwell's delegation to the, to Taiwan. Supposedly all expenses would be paid and it's economic development and cultural exchange. However, I'm too old. They wanted somebody under forty, so I couldn't go.
And so you invited me.
I invited you. But anyway, also there is a Seattle Chamber Leadership Conference that is going to take place Wednesday, Thursday, Friday up in San, San Jose, that, because I'm the incoming president to SEA, I've been invited to. So I gave the city, I gave the city manager and the deputy city manager a list of attendees and I've got highlighted people that I am to, to make sure I introduce myself to and talk to Kenmore about. So we will be up there trying to sell Kenmore. So with that, if there's nothing else to come before us, we're adjourned.